We'll call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2019-10 for May 21, 2019. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father, we pray that Thou be the King, Thy kingdom come, Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us all our sorrows, as we forgive those who thirst and thirst us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thou is the King, the power and the glory of our lives. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative minutes from May 7, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from April 16, 2019 in reference to the honorary street sign policy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from April 16, 2019 in reference to the Purdue Stadium Roof Replacement Funds.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from April 16, 2019 in reference to the Confirmation Department heads.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we open the floor, no, we don't open the floor, no, but we'd like to make a special presentation if we could. Vice President Dodd has a proclamation and recognition of National EMS Week.
Okay, this proclamation, 2019 National EMS Week, whereas emergency medical services is a valid public service and the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing out of hospital care, including preventative medicine and follow-up care, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, and nurses, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and efforts of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims May 19 to the 25, 2019 as National EMS Week, done this 21st day of May, 2019, and signed by the entire county council. And with us, we have Chief Eric Tyler with Parsonburg Volunteer Fire Company. He's also an employee of Anaroma County, so he holds two hats. So there you are.
Just on behalf of the Wycomico County Fire Chiefs Association, Wycomico County Volunteer Fire Fighters Association, and all the career staff that we have in our stations, you know, we want to thank the council for the recognition and support given to us and recognizing National EMS Week for 2019.
Appreciate your work, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on the constant yield rate. The constant yield rate is a hypothetical county real property tax rate calculated by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that would generate the same amount of revenue in fiscal year '20 that was generated the previous year, in this case fiscal year '19, by the tax rate in that year. As the county's accessible real property tax base increases, the constant yield rate decreases. By Maryland law, if the real property tax rate is set at the current level but above the hypothetical constant yield rate, a public hearing must be held. The county executive has submitted a proposed budget for fiscal year '20 with a tax rate of .9346, which is higher than the hypothetical constant yield rate, so we are required by law to have this public hearing today. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held today at 10:00 a.m. This hearing is not about the county's budget or the tax rate to be adopted for fiscal year '20, it's about the constant yield rate. The county council will adopt the fiscal year '20 budget and tax rate at its meeting scheduled for June the 4th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on the constant yield rate. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Okay, this concludes the public hearing on the constant yield rate. Mr. Hurley?
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 69, 2019, to amend the fiscal year's 2019-2023 capital budget to reallocate $947,066 from various airport projects to the UAS hangar project. Council did have a work session on this request at the May 7 council meeting. A public notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website, stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 69, 2019. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, this concludes the public hearing on Resolution 69, 2019. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 69, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, I believe that there's some information we're waiting for, so I don't know if we should perhaps table this. I'm not suggesting to table yet, because I still want to discuss it. Perhaps table this to a later, later time. I don't know if there's further discussion to be had, but we should rush into approving it right now.
Ms. Kilmer, Councilman Kilmer is saying that there could be some more information that we're waiting for at this point in time.
I'll make a motion.
Well, he said he hasn't, he hadn't made a motion yet.
I've made a motion.
All right, Councilman, Vice President Dodd's made a motion to table Resolution 69, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
To opposed, five in favor. Resolution 69, 2019 will be postponed until our June 4 meeting. Is that correct?
We can do June the 4th.
Will that work? Okay. Right.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by Ashley Teagle, Executive Director of the Wycomico County Public Libraries. And as she's coming up, I'll just mention that we did handout, right before the meeting, two handouts that she provided today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
And I do have a PowerPoint. Should I just create a?
Do you have a clicker with you?
I do now.
Okay.
Is it okay if I just advance in here?
Sure.
Okay. So I apologize, I will speak up so everyone can hear me.
Okay. Just if you want to make sure you have a mic, that would be great.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. So the mission of the public libraries is to serve the people of Wycomico County by supporting learning, enriching lives, and building community. And our vision is to be accessible, welcoming community centers that are known as the best source for information by supporting education in all forms, providing excellent library service, leading and bridging the digital divide, and working with our partners to meet the needs of the communities we serve. The public library is essentially our third pillar of education. We partner with Warwick, Salisbury University, and the public schools, and in these partnerships, we act as a support system. For example, currently, I'm in discussion with Salisbury University to make available our public library materials to our college students. While SU's library, of course, focuses on academic materials, the public library can help support the needs of their students recreationally by offering entertainment DVDs and popular novels for checkout. Additionally, we have been working with the public schools to promote our summer reading program, and the American Library Association highlights the following benefits of participation in summer reading. It will encourage reading as a lifelong habit, reluctant readers can be drawn in by the different activities that correlate to the reading, and also, reading over the summer helps children keep up their reading skills. And lastly, the program will generate interest in lifelong reading for Wycomico County students. Lastly, I want to point out, the library at times is the only information source for some of our customers. Not everyone has access to Wi-Fi at home, not everybody owns a computer, even in 2019, and so customers really rely on our staff to help them navigate everything that's available on the Internet as well as what's in the branches. So these are some statistics from last year. We have over 58,000 library cardholders here in Wycomico County, which I think is wonderful against a population of just over 100,000 people. We had over 215,000 visitors last year. We are still taking information questions to the tune of over 24,000. And additionally, libraries really focus, again, on that educational component, so you'll see, we did over 1,300 programs that over 1,500 people attended. Additionally, we get a lot of community support by way of volunteers, so as you can see, last year, we had about 546 volunteers that logged over 3,000 hours assisting us with various programs and tasks. And then, these are stats on some of our other programs that I just wanted to make sure you're familiar with. Again, summer reading runs throughout the summer. We really target the children, but it is also available for adults to participate in. We have a bookmobile, which is the big truck we see around town that checks on materials, but we also added the Reader Van, which has the early literacy component, and they circulated together over 250,000 items for us last year. We now also do cyber-civil clinics through a partnership with a pro bono legal service. They're helping people with questions about expungements, about wills, about estate questions, and that has really caught on. We had over 90 people helped with that program. We also have an adult literacy service called Project Read. We helped 378 people through that. We have our Homework Help Center with over 1,000 visitors. Our Job Search Center helped over 3,000 people. And just so you're aware, we're actually relocating the Job Research Center within the downtown branch to make it a little bit larger, because we found the space that they're in is just a little too small. Also, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, the library is online, so we understand that not everybody's willing or able to come into the physical locations. You can still register to get a library card. That's going to allow you to download music, movies, magazines, right from home. We also offer some popular services like Ancestry for people that like to do genealogy research. Gail Courses is a wonderful tool if you're looking to just do some informal continuing education. You can find topics about how to create a budget, how to use certain types of software, all online. Those are courses that you actually register for and get a certificate of completion at the end. And then, we also offer the language resource Rosetta Stone. Let's see, what else I have here? And I also wanted to throw out Beacon at SU did a fantastic study explaining our value to the community. Libraries are valuable as a learning institution, but also for our economic impact to our community. And basically, what this slide says is that for every dollar that's invested in our public libraries, our community sees $5.40 worth of value out of that. Again, we serve the entire county through the bookmobile, through the Reader Van, and our three branches, but our economic impact is that our operational costs are about 3.5 million. When we have capital expenditures on average, those add another 38,000 to our community, and the value of our materials themselves. So all those books and movies that you see are worth about 9.1 million, and Beacon tried to put a value, like, on the tutoring service, on the job search assistance. Those services are worth another $864,000 to our community. And I'm so excited, it's wonderful coming back home when the library is turning 150 years old. I consider us, at this point, an institution of our community. We started out as a subscription service library in 1869, and that was only two years after the county itself was formed, and then by 1925, we shifted to a free library service. So we moved to our current location down the street in 1963, had a major renovation in 1978, and so as we're going into our 150th anniversary, I invite you to come in and see how your library has changed and has adapted to our community. On June 15, we're doing our summer reading kickoff at the center at Salisbury from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and we're going to have a planetarium there, so I hope you can come out and see that. And that is all that I have for you today. Please, don't hesitate, I'm right down the street. Call or email if you need anything.
Any questions, comments?
Just want to say, I'm the liaison to the library board, and it's, Ashley's relatively new, but she's done great in the few months she's been there, and we've, we're in good addition to come back to our community, so we're glad for all the work you're doing and excited for what you will be doing, so.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I'm surprised the total population served is not even higher. It says only 102,000. I don't know if that's repeat customers or whatever, but I, when I went to Salisbury University, close to 20 years ago, I guess it was, about 20 years ago, we, I would often couldn't find something in the Blackwell Library, so I would come to my own local library, and you all often always had the resources that I needed. So it's amazing that you get so many folks that are other students that aren't from the area, and then I know even Worcester County, other folks that are coming to visit, so it's, I would have expected that to be higher. You guys do great work.
Yeah, thank you. What we counted there was our county population, but definitely, in a more broad survey that I report out to the state, you can definitely see how we're impacting customers in Delaware and elsewhere.
And my question was going to be, following along, is how do you keep track of the visitors?
So we have door counters at the downtown location, and then Pittsville, I think, just got a door counter. We're working on getting center one. Prior to that, we were just relying on good old fashioned tick marks.
And what about online visitors?
Online visits are tracked through our IT department.
Are they included?
Not in this slide, but they may actually be on the handouts I provided, but we have seen a dramatic increase in online visitors, so where it feels like the physical computer use in the library has kind of tapered off, we saw a dramatic increase to the tune of over 100,000 Wi-Fi users.
And that's probably why you don't see the higher numbers at the door.
Exactly, yeah.
Just a quick, yeah, a quick comment, just want to compliment you on such a job well done, and I was really pleased to see the success of Project Read.
Yes.
I know our Rotary Club, which, you remember?
Yes.
Helped launch that a few years ago, and then to see how many of our citizens were able to participate in that and, you know, and advance forward. It's a, it's a great, great program, and just one of many programs that you all offer.
Yes, thank you so much. And I know Wynette, who's the coordinator for Project Read, has talked about, as she expands, looking at perhaps targeting prisoners who have been recently released. I think that's a great community to target, to bring them up to par, so again, hopefully we can get them back out in the community and employed.
Yep, great program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Teale.
Okay, the next item for business is the submission of appointments to the Board of Library Trustees, Animal Appeals Board, and the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards and commissions, to council for confirmation at a legislative session. The Director of Administration has formally submitted names for appointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Animal Appeals Board, and the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. Starting with Resolution Number 70, 2019, confirming the appointment of Charles R. De Shield Jr. to the Board of Library Trustees. The Board of Library Trustees provides policy and budgetary oversight for the library.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 70, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 71, 2019, confirming the appointment of Karen Trevor to the Board of Library Trustees.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 71, 2019.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is Resolution Number 72, 2019, confirming the reappointment of Weston S. Young to the Animal Appeals Board. The Animal Appeals Board hears and decides appeals or determinations made by the Animal Control Authority concerning the classification of an animal as potentially dangerous or dangerous and/or the requirements established pursuant to make such determinations, as well as make advisory recommendations concerning the fines authorized by Chapter 133, and they make advisory recommendations regarding the changes, implementation, and administration of the animal control laws in the county.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 72, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 73, 2019, confirming the reappointment of Captain Todd Richardson to the Animal Appeals Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 73, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Keep in mind, Captain Richardson and Sheriff Lewis are in the audience, and they're both armed.
If they don't know if we armed, we might be armed too.
No discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
The next item for consideration is Resolution Number 74, 2019, confirming the appointment of Winford M. Dyer IV to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. This committee was established in 2009 for the purpose of developing a comprehensive GI plan with strategies to implement green infrastructure conservation in Wycomico County.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 74, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 75, 2019, to appoint the Board of Managers for various public drainage associations within Wycomico County. For the record, I'll read off the Board of Managers for each district as shown in Resolution Number 75, starting with the Allen District. So the public drainage association is Allen, and the managers are Ellen G. Gray, George A. Whitney, David Quick. For Adalat, it's Sid Richardson, Bruce Lewis, and Justin, Justin Day. Beaver Dam is Arden Hickman, Quentin Riley, George Bradford. Dividing Creek is Jimmy Johnson, Eric Culver, Tommy Johnson, and Roger Richardson. Gibbons is Ben Brittingham, Gary Brittingham, and Bruce Kelly. For Green Branch, it's Herman Davis, Alan Richardson, Edwin Hudson. Head of Creek, Dale Massey, Elsie M. Wallace, Harland Jones. Horsebridge, Larry First, Raymond Atkins, Orrin Perdue, and Jim Mikulosovich. Laws, Victor Laws III, Joe Durak, Ben Brittingham, Mill Branch, John Edwards, David Kenny, Donna Ensley, Nanakoke, Dean Gregor Dupus, Milford Wilson, and Patrick Tobat. Nebo, Clifton Lawrence, and Tyrone Price. You notice with Nebo, there's only two managers. The third was Goldsboro Lawrence, and he recently passed away. They are seeking a replacement for him. The next is Passardike, Charles Fleming III, Bob Gannon, Gene Donalds, Pine Branch, George C. White, Linda Truitt, Dave Williams. Texas Road, Bernard Nutter, Arsimus Nutter, Madeline Wigfall. That's all of the managers.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 75, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 76, 2019. This is to certify the drainage tax rule to the Director of Finance as requested by the Board of Managers of the Public Drainage Associations. Council was notified yesterday by Mr. Bob Taylor that under Article, or Title 26 of the Local Government Article, the Board of Managers should provide any special assessment for the maintenance of drainage projects to the executive branch for the collection of the funds, so there does not appear to be any formal action required by council. Council can certainly move forward with the resolution if they would like to. If you wish to do that, I can read each tax levy into the record.
First, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 76, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, this is the way it's, we've always done it this way, approved resolution, although I guess we don't necessarily need to, is what.
Yeah, I'd offer.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I'd offer these thoughts on that. First of all, it is, appears to be completely unnecessary. Now, this came up pretty quickly yesterday when Ms. Hurley asked me about another aspect of these assessments, and we looked into the state code and saw how it read. We could quickly check, and by that I mean for your next meeting, to see how other counties do it. I tried to check quickly with Worcester last night, and I believe that Worcester County does not do anything like this, for the simple reason that it's not necessary. The other point that I think's worth considering is that if you're going to do any kind of a certification, that that appears to be an approval, and unless you've looked at what the assessments are and made some determination as to whether they are appropriate for the circumstances, frankly, I don't think the council should become involved, because it's not something that they have to be involved in. The assessments go to the executive branch, and I understand they've already been turned in to the executive branch, so that part's been done. And under state law, it's just a matter of automatically, the executive branch processes it, collects the tax assessments, they don't call them taxes anymore. They're technically now special assessment ditches, not tax ditches, but I know old habits are hard to break. And then, they collect the money, they hold it until it's to be paid out, and for their services, for the county's services, in collecting it, if they want to get it, they can take a 3% cut. And so, there's no reason for council to be involved whatsoever. I would table this, we can certainly check before the next meeting, just to see if every other county is doing it this way. My hunch is that none of them are.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Further discussion?
I think we should take Mr. Taylor's advice, and I'd make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Motion to table, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, Resolution 76, 2019 is tabled.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 77, 2019, confirming the appointment of a nominee to the Wycomico County Board of Education. The two candidates are Gaines Hawkins and Tanya Laird Lewis. The county council has conducted interviews with the two candidates, and they have a public hearing on May the 7th. The next step is to select one of the nominations.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 77, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tanya Lewis.
Second.
Is that an amendment?
Yes.
We have an amendment to Resolution 77, 2019, to appoint Tanya Lewis, and there is a second. Council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. Any further discussion on Resolution 77, 2019, as amended?
Can you do a roll call vote on that?
Certainly, we'll do a roll call. We'll start with Councilman Hastings.
Oppose.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman, Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Oppose.
Councilman Davis?
Oppose.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
And the Chair of Stains. So we are in a 3-3?
You have a tie vote.
Okay, so we have further discussion if anyone wants to engage.
This is the problem with getting good candidates.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Can you make a motion for, can we continue to, we have two candidates.
Well, we're in discussion. You're right, we are in discussion.
So I'd make a motion for Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, as, for the record, the, thank you, Bill. For the record, the amendment as proposed by Councilman Holloway does not pass due to the fact that it is a three-to-three tie. So that, okay, all right, Councilman Kane, go ahead.
So I'd make a motion for Mr. Hawkins.
We have a motion for Mr. Hawkins.
I'll second.
And we have a motion to second. Any discussion? We'll also take a vote on this one in favor of Mr. Hawkins. Councilman McCain?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
No.
Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
No.
Vice President Dodd?
Nay.
And again, the Chair abstains. So we are at three-three, gentlemen. This does not pass. We'll have to go back to the Board of Education for another recommendation.
The nominating committee, you'll have to go back to.
To nominate, what did I say? I'm sorry, yeah, the nominating commission.
Are the other options, special meeting or anything, are we allowed to? How does that work out? I know we have a budget.
The resolution could be considered at the next meeting. We currently have until June third. We were on a time schedule of sixty days. So we would have to have a special meeting if that's something council wants to consider again.
That's a good point.
I think the option is either one of us has to change our votes. Change your vote, or the law says that you can return the names to the commission and request the commission to submit the names of at least two additional qualified nominees and start the process over again. So, I guess, but we have until, I mean, we could, one of us could reconsider by the next meeting, you say?
June third.
Okay.
Okay, so this time, just for the record, so we understand the amendment made, introduced by Councilman McCain, did not pass due to the fact that it was a tie vote. So the Resolution Number Seventy-Seven dash Two Thousand and Nineteen, entertaining a motion to approve Resolution Seventy-Seven, Two Thousand and Nineteen, which has not been amended, we're not going to be able to do this. So I'm going to need a motion to table this, or?
The motion just fails.
Motion fails.
And the resolution does not pass.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Next, we have several resolutions that pertain to department head confirmations, and I'm going to let Mr. Bob Taylor give counsel, as well as the public, some background information on this.
Unless you want me to provide more legal leaves, I'll give you the real short, short version of it. We talked about this at the April Sixteen meeting that you just approved the minutes for. That was an open session. And I believe we briefly talked about it at the last meeting. The long and short of it is that the charter requires the county executive to appoint the department heads after each election, after each county election of the county executive, within a six-month period. Just incidentally, that six-month period expired May the seventh, the date of the council's last meeting. He has not, for whatever reason, we've heard different ones, not appointed anyone in the sense of bringing the appointments to the council. The county attorney, incidentally, agrees with my analysis and the analysis we've talked about at our past meetings that the county exec is required to make these appointments after each election. Under the circumstances, it seems reasonable to me, just as a general matter, and also as a legal matter, that the council should proceed as if the recommendations had been made for the people who are currently serving or were serving as of May seventh, the expiration of that six-month period that I just mentioned, as being the appointees, because he's required to make the appointments under the charter. And then, the second phase of this appointment process after each election is that there's, the appointees are to be either confirmed or rejected by the council. And there's a period for that. It happens to be forty-five days after the appointments are made, or in this case, are made by implication, on May the seventh. So I think we have before us today the resolutions for all of the persons who we know are serving in a position, a department head position, or other positions for which he has to make the nom, is supposed to make the nominations for consideration by the council on an up or down vote. And Ms. Hurley can go through each one. The resolutions have been written to point out the fact that the county executive has not appointed anyone else to the particular department head position. Nobody else other than the person who's now serving and who is named in the resolution. And that the council is acting pursuant to the Charter section, it happens to be Three Fifteen, Subpart A, that talks in terms of the confirmation or rejection of the appointees. If there's any further questions on that, I can get further into the legal weeds, but that's kind of the short version where we are today.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And it should be noted as well that the council has received no, no written legal opinion as we have requested of the executive in support of his position. That request was made. We have not received any, any written legal opinion to substantiate that position. Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution Seventy-Eight, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Should we say who that was?
I'm sorry.
Just for the record, I'm going to read off the heading of that resolution, so everyone knows. That was Resolution Number Seventy-Eight, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Dallas Baker to serve as the head of the Department of Public Works in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley, and that vote was in favor.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Nexus Resolution Number Seventy-Nine, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Stephen Miller to serve as the head of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution Seventy-Nine, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next, Resolution Number Eighty, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Lori A. Carter to serve as the head of the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Eighty-One, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Michelle Bradley to serve as the head of the Wacomiko Partnership for Families and Children in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-One, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number Eighty-Two, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming John R. Monar to serve as the head of the Department of Information Services in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Two, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number Eighty-Three, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming David G. Shipley to serve as the head of the Department of Emergency Services in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Three, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number Eighty-Four, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Ruth Colbrun to serve as the head of the Department of Corrections in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Four, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number Eighty-Five, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Confirming Dawn Beach to serve as the General Manager for the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wacomiko Regional Airport in accordance with the Wacomiko County Charter.
Entertained a motion from counsel to approve Resolution Eighty-Five, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number Eighty-Six, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Removing the County Attorney from Office pursuant to Section Five Oh Seven A of the County Charter. And I just want to bring to your attention that this resolution does require a supermajority vote, which is five council members voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Six, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Couple comments. The, I mean, I've had numerous people reach out regarding this issue that are not in favor of this. I mean, and I'm on the record as not in favor of this. I just don't think it's a good move by the council. But I just want to make note of that.
Thank you, Councilman McCain. Any other discussion? And we'll do a roll call on this. All those in favor of Resolution Eighty-Six, Two Thousand and Nineteen, we'll start with Councilman Hastings. If you vote in favor, it is in favor of removing the county attorney. If you vote opposed, you are opposed to that removal.
Yay.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Opposed.
The Chair votes aye. Resolution Number Eighty-Six, Two Thousand and Nineteen is approved.
The next item for consideration is Resolution Number Eighty-Seven, Two Thousand and Nineteen, To authorize the county executive to acquire two lots in Delmar, Maryland next to the Mason Dixon Sports Complex to improve parking and for future park improvements. Council did have a work session on this at its last meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Seven, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The next item for business is Resolution Number Eighty-Eight, Two Thousand and Nineteen, Extending the day for the adoption of the Annual Budget and Appropriation Bill from June the first to June the fourth, Two Thousand and Nineteen. Per Charter Section Seven Oh Five F, the annual budget and appropriation bill is to be adopted by June the first, unless that date is extended by resolution to a date no later than June the fifteenth. This year, June the first falls on a Saturday, and the next regularly scheduled council meeting is on June the fourth.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution Eighty-Eight, Two Thousand and Nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good morning, Ms. Taylor.
Good morning. One, one bill for introduction this morning. It's Bill Number Two Thousand Nineteen dash Oh Five, introduced by the President of the Council. It's an act to amend the Wacomiko County Classification and Pay Plan by adding positions in the sheriff's office. Happens to be two deputy first-class positions and one corporal position. The agenda lists some Mr. Wayne Strasberg for this, and I see Sheriff Lewis is here too, so I guess they can flip for it.
Entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill, Two Thousand Nineteen Oh Five.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Sheriff? Captain? Wayne? You guys shouldn't fight over this, you know. Good morning, Sheriff, how are you?
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good, good to have you here.
As a direct result of the opioid crisis here in Wacomiko County and the increase in active shooters across the country, and the increase in our judiciary here in Wacomiko County, we've had to juggle our personnel to make them readily available to respond first to the opioid crisis. And we are conducting active shooter training throughout Wacomiko County. And the judges have demanded a stronger and greater visible presence in our courtrooms. And we've had to juggle personnel now for the last several years. We have not asked for any additional people. And when we did ask for additional people in this particular budget, we did so realizing that this would be in our budget and that our budget would come before the council for legislative approval. I had no idea that this was going to be voted on legislatively today as a different issue, and I don't understand why that is the way it is. And I'm very concerned about that, because we need these positions. I have not had any increase in positions at the Wacomiko County Sheriff's Office, as you well know, since I've been there. We have filled existing vacancies, but we have had no increase in personnel at all. And it's, it's, I have not asked for those new positions, had a consideration with the council in the budget situation the way it's been. But we are in dire need of personnel. That is the number-one request that I have, of personnel and of course, vehicles in our budget this year. And I don't understand why this is being legislated separately from our budget as a whole.
You make a good point, Sheriff. I can understand that. But we are obligated by the charter that we have to actually amend the classification and pay plan. That's required when a new position is added in, in any department. That's how, that's how I understand it. It's not, it's not so much, it is a case where the council would, you know, I guess, make the decision as whether they wanted to approve that addition or not. But this is the formal steps that have to be taken. Once you say we want to add three new deputies, there's two processes. One would be the legislative bill, which would establish those positions formally. And the second, the second element of that is in the budget, where we approve the funding for those positions.
We have invested several months in processing prospective applicants. And we have a very talented group of men and women that are vying for positions in this next academy class, which begins in July.
Right.
And the Salisbury Police Department and the Fruitland Police Department are vying for the same pool of candidates. And for the first time, I have a, an extremely interested and very talented Haitian individual who speaks Creole very fluently, something that's been needed in our community for quite some time.
Yeah.
A beautiful reflection of a growing populace we have here in Wacomiko County. And this young man is so excited. And I met with him last week, and I led him to believe that, that while it was not a foregone conclusion, that there was a great possibility that these positions are going to be approved because they are badly needed here in Wacomiko County. And I would just ask that if we are going to make this a separate legislative issue, and I understand what you said, Mr. President, I just hope we can make this happen before July the first, before this next academy class starts. If not, we're going to lose this man to another agency, no doubt in my mind.
Well, I apologize for the fact, Sheriff, that you were not notified as soon as, you know, as soon as mention of that came in, I guess, to either the administration or to the council. I apologize for the fact that your office was not notified of what the procedures were going to be once that was presented, so you have my apologies for that. But thank you for your explanations. Any questions from counsel?
Well, to clarify, this should, I mean, introduce it today, have a public hearing two weeks.
Exactly.
Approve it in two weeks, correct?
Right.
Or, I mean, assuming there's some more.
I don't know. Ms. Hurley, can you advertise it?
Yeah, it requires two weeks worth of advertising, so the earliest we can have the public hearing would be June the eighteenth.
But it could be approved on June the eighteenth?
That is correct.
Would it be helpful if we took a consensus today of an idea of what the council's thinking? So there would be some.
Well, we're in discussion to introduce it, so yeah, that's, that's quite fair, yes.
I'm okay with it.
Can I ask a question? Mike, is this, like, how many corporals you have now?
Captain? That's why I look back at cats. We, we created a supervisory position for corporal based on the community action team as a direct result of the opioid crisis.
That's what this is, to create another corporal slot?
That, a corporal and two, three deputies total, one of those which would be a supervisory position, a first-line supervisory position.
So, $4,000 difference in salary.
I don't know that.
Any other questions? Yes, Michael, keep in mind, as Ms. Hurley said, this introduces the bill, we have a whole, we have a whole list of things we have to do, okay? This introduces the bill, has to go to a public hearing, as a matter of fact, so, and then it comes back to the council where we have to actually approve the bill.
And we can do that one day? We can do the public hearing and vote?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
So it should be done by July first?
And July first, it should be done.
Captain, do you have anything else you want to add?
Two.
I have to, Captain, if you have anything else you want to add.
In order to hire, we need a commitment on the eighteenth, and I would have to ask a permission from finance to actually bring them on board two weeks early in this budget year. We have the additional funds in this year's budget to take care of those two weeks if that's the word.
Hang on one second. Ms. Hurley, can you help me with the timeline? I need to know this. Once it goes to public hearing and it is formally, we vote on the legislative bill, presumably we vote on the legislative bill the same day as a public hearing, the timeline has to go into effect and whether emergency legislation could be introduced?
If emergent, if you consider this as emergency legislation, it could go into effect right away.
You say right away, the date?
The date that it's voted on.
Which would be, what would we anticipate?
June the eighteenth.
June the eighteenth.
What is that?
If it's not considered emergency legislation, then once the county executive approves the bill, it goes into effect 60 days following his signature on the bill.
Yeah, well, for just 15 months now.
Okay. I think in light of public safety...
I think this could be put in as an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
We can look at that tomorrow or something, get a quick answer, you know?
I think we've certainly, we've certainly passed emergency legislation that was less of an emergency. I do know that.
Can it be passed today?
Well, is that articulate then?
No.
All right. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess I asked a question a minute ago.
Yeah, you're looking for a consensus, Jim.
Yeah, looking for a consensus.
Can we get a consensus from the council?
Just some kind of idea of what they can leave the room with today, knowing what's going on. Yeah. How are we? We're fine with the eighteen.
We're good? Everybody's good?
We'll do it as quick as we can.
We're good.
For provision.
If not, you can vote no on the introduction. All those in favor of introducing legislative bill 2019-05, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Legislative bill 2019-05 has been formally introduced. Did we need to amend that as emergency? We'll do that when it comes to the floor, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Captain. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concern.
My name is Cynthia Doherty. I live on Porter Mill Road in Hebron, Maryland. And myself and many of my neighbors are here to discuss a permit that has been issued for the erection of a 3 million gallon store, open storage facility for poultry byproducts. It's going to be put in our neighborhood. We know the permit's been issued, but we would like to have you all understand the impact it's going to have on us and maybe what you could do in the future so that this does not occur. I've lived on Porter Mill Road since 1992. I love this county. It's the only place I've ever lived. I graduated from Salisbury University and worked almost my entire career in the Maryland State Police in this county. I live in a great community with really good neighbors, and I'm afraid we will lose our high quality of life if that 3 million gallon open storage tank is built near us. It'll hold the same material that has been spread on the fields at Porter Mill Road and Route 50. I have smelled that stench that, at times, is overwhelming. And I'm not talking about dirty sneakers stench. I'm not even talking about chicken manure house stench. This is a whole new level. Maybe you should take a field trip so you know what it smells like and whether or not you want it built close to you. We live in a community where people know one another and they look out for each other. When a tree falls down across the road, somebody with a chainsaw comes along, cuts it, and removes it. We don't call county roads, not very often. We wave and speak to each other. We grow small gardens and we share the produce. People work in their yards, they keep the grass cut, they plant flowers. I've got a neighbor that I know is going to bake and give me Christmas cookies, and in the fall, his wife is going to give me a mom. Do it every year. And when they go out of town, I'm going to look after their property. I have another neighbor that brings me over steamed crabs. A couple of us washed a neighbor's house because she was sick and needed it done. I have seen people walk and jog and bike by the site where this permit is going to allow the structure to be built. I've seen deer and fox and wild turkey and bald eagles and even river otters go by the creek that's nearby. I like being able to smell wild magnolias and honeysuckles. Is there a better way to wake up than drinking a hot cup of coffee on a cool morning on your own patio or on your deck? We will lose this if the stench and the flies are so bad that we drive home, we go into our house, and we stay there with our windows down. I don't want to be embarrassed to tell people to come over to my house because it stinks. I worry about the flies and the smell and the noise and the extra traffic, but what I really worry about is if it overflows during one of these heavy rains that we seem to be getting more of. I'm not bashing this farmer or any other farmer. They are up and at it before most of us even roll over and hit the snooze button. They're a hard-working group. He has not broken any procedures that I'm aware of. He's our neighbor. I've had conversations with him, I've shared laughs with him. There was a time when I was struggling with something in my yard. He drove by, saw that I needed help, got out and helped me, not because I asked him, but because he saw me and helped me. No one knew I needed help. I hear he is looking for a new site, and I am greatly appreciative of his efforts on that part. We live in one of many good communities in this county. As you drive home, you notice how many fields there are next to neighborhoods and businesses in the Route 13 and the Route 50 corridor. There has got to be a better procedure in place so farming operations and their neighbors can live together. And what I'm hoping for this, from this council, is that you will address the codes in place. This was a blind side for us, and I believe it was a blind side for you also, not because he did anything wrong, but because of the procedures that are in place now. Something really does need to be done about it, and I thank you for your time this morning, and I thank you for the attention you're going to give it.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
As always, giving honor to God and thanking Him for the opportunity to be here. President Cannon and members of the county council and all those assembled, good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm President Wycomico County in the ECP, and I'm very briefed this morning. I rise to support the sheriff's request for the two deputy first-class position and a corporal position. I know that there will be a public hearing, but I address issues as it comes. I don't know where I'll be June 18th, so I'm sharing with you now that we support this. I have confidence that he knows what he needs, and we support this. And the other thing is, I applaud him for diversity and seeking diversity. It would be great for us to have a Haitian person in the sheriff's office. So I hope that when it comes to public hearing or whatever, that folks be supportive for this, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, President Ashanti. Any other public comments?
Good morning. My name is Pamela Olshewski. I also live on Porter Mill Road, and I'm employed by Salisbury University as a faculty member. I'm here to also speak about the storage container that's slated for Porter Mill Road. I'd like to present the council with our petition that we assembled over the last few days. There are 81 signatures, and they come from Porter Mill Road, Regan Road, Deerfield Road, all the homes or most of the homes around the slated spot for the sludge container, and also the homes up at the top of Porter Mill Road, which are directly across from some of the fields where the sludge has already been applied. I just wanted to not just only share you, share with you all of the people who are concerned, but my experiences with gathering these signatures. As I gathered 26, about 26 of these signatures, every single home, every single door that I went to, the person or persons in the home were in favor of this petition and signed it, 100% of them. They welcomed me into their homes, they wanted to talk about their experiences with not being able to go out into their yard because of the stench and the flies. It wasn't, it wasn't told to me, but to one of the other people in my group, that one family said we had to cancel our Mother's Day celebration in the backyard because of the problem with the renderings on the field. I also talked to people who immediately wanted to sign. I hadn't even got the words out of my mouth about what this petition was about. Many people, on my part of the petition, you can see I've written asterisks next to names and slashes. They wanted to be kept up to date on what could be done and what the county was willing to do to keep them informed about these kinds of goings-on and also about any way to keep an eye on making sure all regulations were followed. Some of the people here today are from this community. And I, my wish for this is that we won't have a tank on Porter Mill Road. I'm about a half a mile from there. I live across from Cindy Doherty. I'm the mom giver. And this tank will be about a half a mile from my house. I like to go outside. I plan on retiring next year, and I like to be able to sit outside on my deck and have a cookout and not be subjugated to the smell and the flies that this tank will produce. We visited a tank that was 1 million gallons, hardly full, hardly, almost empty, and we stood about 20 yards away from it, and it was overpowering. And this is a 3 million gallon tank that's going to be a half a mile from my road. So first is we needed to know more about this before the permit was issued, and now we want to make sure that it's regulated. And I guess that's all I have to say. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Olshewski.
Good morning. My name is Lynette Kenny. My husband, David, and I have lived at 24790 for 43 years. It's just been a week last Tuesday that we learned that this permit or the application for the permit had been applied for. So within a week's time, we've had to assimilate all the information that we've gotten and find out and educate ourselves about what is really going on. We've called the county, and what the information that we've gotten is, sorry, there is not a thing that we can do about it. They're interested in strictly the structure, that it's engineered properly. What goes in it is not of any issue to them. Called the MDA. I called the MDA. The first man I talked to, well, the only man I talked to, really, when I first said, you know, the sludge tank, he says, "We've been instructed that not to talk about storage issues, that not to get involved with storage issues." Well, wait a minute. I've been told to call you, and I'm wondering, you know, how far is this can going to get kicked down the road? But he did talk to me for 55 minutes. He talked to me, and he answered a lot of questions, and I had a lot of questions. And I felt better after talking to him about maybe some solutions and some forward-thinking ideas. But that's because he talked to me for 55 minutes. I may live in the country, but I live in a neighborhood, just as these ladies have discussed. Now, I know the permit's been issued, and there's nothing we can do about it legally. But I think that there is something you, as a council, can do. You can look at the county code, and, by the way, Dorchester, the application for the permit in Dorchester was withdrawn by the same farmer. There was enough opposition and time to discuss this issue, and the powers that be were behind it. I know they have a different code from you, but there are ways to make some differences in matters like this. This sludge tank is going to be less than a quarter mile from my house. You can look at the county code, and you can change it to allow citizens, tax-paying citizens, the opportunity to be heard at public hearings. There is no public hearing required for something like this as to the impact that this is going to make on their lives. And you can provide, maybe perhaps give us, give us opportunity to ask questions in a public forum of some sort. And I talked to the man from MDA about this. It was Mr. Dodderer. Receive information and become better informed and perhaps even supported of certain projects if we had a better knowledge, if we understand them better. You can give us recourse if our lives are negatively impacted. And I know that there is an ag mediation committee set up in the county, and that might be a route that sometime we might have to go through. But let's, let's head it off before it gets to that point. Bottom line is, we need to communicate, 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 and I really deplore the us versus the mentality, and I think that we can find ways to work together with benefits, everybody, the ag community as well as the residents. And it is a resident, there are residents. It is regulated as ag, and I understand that. And I've lived there for 43 years, understanding that, and that's fine. But this is a little different. One area that particularly concerns me is the effect of the increased commercial tractor-trailers that will have on the already deplorable condition of Porter Mill and Regan Roads. And you've heard the saying, "A picture's worth a thousand words." Well, I've given you 16,000 words in the pictures that are being passed out. There are 16 pictures to show you the deterioration of these two roads, the crumbling edges, the sharp blind curves that we have to, we know how to do it every day, but we're not used to that amount of tractor-trailer traffic on these roads. And in fact, there are times, especially on Regan Road, that I have had to pull, stop my car and pull over to let some of these rigs by, because they do go by and currently spread the slush on the, I mean, the sludge on the fields around us. Of great concern are the winter months, and that's when, December through February is when most of this traffic will occur because that's when this stuff has to be stored and not spread. And if anybody's been out to, on these two roads during those months, you'll know that these roads can be ice-covered for a month at a time, seriously. And I have seen times where, and that the road bit has actually given way to dirt, and we are driving on stretches of dirt road. And have you heard the saying, "You get stuck in a rut"? Well, you want to get stuck in a rut, or else you're going to get stuck. So we wait until, you have to wait until the winter season's over and the freeze-stall cycle. And come spring, the county comes out and patches it. But that's what we put up with now. I can't imagine what it's going to be like with these trucks during the winter up and down Porter Mill and Regan Road. I can also not imagine the increased safety issues that we will experience with not only vehicular travelers, but also with walkers, joggers, and cyclists. They use it a lot. Please, there is something you can do. We request that you do some sort of a traffic study on these two roads to assess the condition and also the amount of traffic that currently uses these two roads. And also communicate, educate, and consider changes to the county code that will protect agriculture as well as protect residents. And finally, I challenge you all to take a ride down Porter Mill and Regan Roads, and I am available with my Buick to take you on a road trip. I'd be glad to take you, so you can see for yourselves what we currently put up with. And the condition of these roads really needs something done to them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Sarg. I live on Deerfield Road. My name is not on that petition because I was not aware of it. I found out about this last night through word of mouth. I stand up here pretty angry. Again, this is a typical, I'm making a generalization, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. 10 o'clock Wycomico County hearing, most people are working. Luckily, I'm retired, so I get to come here and discuss this. I live in the country. I am aware of the stench from this sludge spread. We deal with it on a daily or a monthly basis, unplanning season time or whenever. We tolerate it because it is normally put in the ground immediately. We deal with it a couple of days, the stench goes... We deal with it a couple of days, the stench goes away. We're not dealing with a storage issue. Mrs. Kenny addressed the storage issue of 3 million gallons. Have you done the math? The average tractor-trailer, and I'm going by gasoline, I'm trying to remember figures. A tractor-trailer holds 8,000 gallons of gas. So let's say it holds 8,000 gallons of sludge. That's 375 tractor-trailers just to get it to the storage facility. And then the tractor-trailer has to go back out to the highway again. So that's two trips on either road, Porter Mill or Reagan. I want to know what is in for the county. How much a gallon are you guys getting out of it? I know that this is a business opportunity. Everybody does something for money. That's understandable. We don't have to be the suckers in our area that, evidently, this stuff's being stored somewhere else, because he's getting paid a pretty good load, or a pretty good amount for each load that comes down here, and he's not storing it. Mardella School District, it's one of the most sought-after school districts in the county. Families want to go there, they want their kids to go there. You think this is going to attract families to Mardella because of that? Who wants to live next to something like that? All of us locally, we tolerate it, and I know it, I live there, I grew up on a farm. I know the stench. But it's on just, you know it's temporary, you know it's planning season, you know these things. How this slipped through? Yeah, it might be legal, permit-wise, but you guys are making some, if you don't follow up with this and change some laws or change something to look at this, where's this stuff being stored right now? Why don't you go put it out there in Lincoln, next to Valley Proteins? It's funny, years ago, boy, I guarantee you, every one of you ride to Annapolis, you'd hold your nose in Lincoln when you got there, because it stunk so bad. Go down on 50 where Purdue, in the summertime, was processing. Boy, you want to get through there as fast as you can. In fact, the tourists were tickled when the bypass was built, because they don't have to come through stinky Salisbury. You're going to force us to live in a neighborhood with this kind of stench? And like she said, the curve on Reagan Road down by the substation, by the power station, you meet a tractor-trailer there, and they're probably going to be running in pairs and making the assumption, because I see the local businesses that are doing it now are running at nighttime, and they come around the corner there, you're going to be run off the road. That's all I've got to say. Some of this stuff really needs to be addressed. I'm mad, because I only found out about this last night. I'll gladly put my name to that if, my name's on there, even though it's not. I think you can tell by my ejections. Enough said.
Thank you, Ms. Sarg.
Good morning. Patricia Cook, collection manager for Delaware Elevator. Avid exercise person. I like to, I used to like to walk my dog. The speed limit, I live right on Porter Mill. I'm here representing my subdivision. A lot of the people in my subdivision, including my husband, who has COPD, are elderly. Do we think of them? No. Are we thinking about constantly laying this fertilizer that nobody can breathe in? I don't wa, I don't ride my bike anymore. I can't walk my dog. I've tried to walk down towards 50. I've done this for 14 years. And those 18-wheelers that are hauling out the sod are, there's a 50 mile an hour speed limit on that road. I think that's pretty scary, and I'm alarmed. So I don't walk anymore. I bring my bike, I'll dress up at work, I'll ride on my lunch hour. I bought a military mask that I've tried to wear as I go out and bike while I avoid 18-wheelers swerving just to make a dollar. But I'm really here to speak on behalf of the elderly people in the community that cannot be here, that live there. I'm an eighth of a mile from it, so I get the lovely smell every day. And thank the farmers for getting up at 2:30 in the morning to lay this, because we get the fine opportunity to smell it all day long. I don't sit out on my deck anymore at night and enjoy a glass of wine, but feel free to come visit me. I have beer and wine, but we'll probably sit in the house. And I used to like to garden, in my vegetable garden. I'm not doing that anymore. It's basically what she stated. We live inside. We don't open our windows. I made the mistake of opening my window going, "Oh, my God, that smell was just permeating my house." So thank you very much. I took time off from work to give you my feelings, and those are the people that can't be here.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. One point of clarification from the council is that this was not a, a meeting that the council scheduled for 10 a.m. We have public hearings at every meeting, whether it's 10 a.m. or 6 p.m. As I understand it, this is, this is most likely been orchestrated by the neighborhood asking everyone in the neighborhood to come to our 10 o'clock meeting today. I will keep in mind, though, that if, if the council pursues this through any work sessions, we'll make sure the work sessions are held, our 6 p.m. session, so that anyone in the neighborhood will be able to attend. I just want to make that clarification for you ahead of time. Good morning.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. My name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Hebron, Maryland. And I thank you for allowing me to stand before you again to share my thoughts on the renovation project in Mardella Middle and High School and the County Executive's Capital Improvement Plan. Two weeks ago, I spoke a lot about my concerns regarding Mardella Middle and High School being removed by the CIP. I also tried to inform our citizens of Wycomco County some of the important facts, such as the history of the school, past school construction projects and how those were funded, the critical needs of Mardella that include the educational needs, safety issues, and the building and parking issues. I also asked Mr. Culver to work with the Board of Education, the County Council, and to find a solution. I also asked Mr. Culver to amend the CIP and add Mardella back as a priority for the county. Since that time, I am thankful that within a day or two, Mr. Culver and his staff started discussions with the Board of Education, and shortly thereafter, came up with an interim solution to fund the first part of the study, which will satisfy the state's needs and considering us being Mardella School District for construction funds in the future, and as well as an amended CIP, which is on your agenda, I think, for a discussion today. I don't want to assume anything, but I am hopeful that Mardella is back in the CIP as a priority in the five-year plan as it was written prior to April 12, 2019. But with the amendment for the plan for the $291,000, that was pulled from another project that could not be completed right now, and that you would be able to look at that, discuss it, and approve it on June 4. Now, I did read in the Salisbury Independent about how the County Executive's Office was not aware of Mardella being such a priority until recently. And I'm not going to really debate that issue, because simply, it really doesn't matter. It was on the CIP until April 12, 2019. Mardella has been waiting to be at the top of the priority list since 2019, I mean, 2009, when the future of Mardella's study was done. I think we can agree that priorities change when systems fail, buildings fail, student population changes, and as one project is completed, we move on to the next project. The reality is that Mardella is failing. The needs are real, and the time is now for the County Executive and the County Council to work with the Board of Education and find solutions to keep Mardella as a priority and be strategic but financially responsible at the same time in meeting the needs of our students. So I am actually anxiously waiting for the work session today to hear more about the amended CIP. And it is my hope that it is documented clearly in the CIP, that Mardella is a priority, there is a plan for discussion, and that it's just not a, a short little clip just to pacify us, because that's not going to be good enough for me or the people that I think stand behind me and wanting Mardella to move forward. So I, I'm going to ask, I'm going to say thank you for the work that's been done so far, and I'm going to ask that all the different groups work together and have discussions to find a solution. And that's all I have to say about Mardella. But I will add a little comment about the vote earlier about the Board of Education I was against the elected school board, and I think, I think you know that already, because I was appointed. And I feel like I was appointed because of my involvement in the community and what I could bring, and that I was a person of, that just wanted to serve. Didn't matter what political party I was. And I don't know, I know some of you, I know what some of your affiliates are, but I don't know all of it, because I really don't pay attention to it. I don't think it's important. So I hope that when you're making your decisions about the individual that serves on the Board of Education, that it's a person that you're taking because of-
Excuse me, Ms. Wright, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
If you could do me a favor, if you need, need to have discussions, if you could take outside. I know you think you're whispering, but you'd be surprised how far that travels. Thank you. That's okay. That's right.
That's okay. But I just wanted to say that I hope that when you're making your decisions and you're looking at these individuals, that you're doing it based on what you think they bring to the Board of Education, not because of their political affiliation. I generally get tired of the political lines, or making decisions about political lines. And like I said, I don't know whose, I don't know all of you as far as what party you're affiliated with, but I would just ask you to base it on a person and what they bring to the table, and not because of the political line they may be on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Any other public comments?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maria Bailey. I reside at 2533 Porter Mill Road, and my name is on that petition. I have only lived at that address for, going on seven years in September. We decided to buy the home there because it's a lovely, lovely neighborhood, and as Ms. Dougherty commented and the other ladies, the neighbors are great. It's where I chose to raise my child. I wanted to buy a house where I would never move from and raise my son. The smell, rather, the stench that is on the fields is horrendous. I worked in wastewater for 11 years. The smell makes me gag. A 3 million gallon tank is very large. I'm concerned, again, about the smell. It will travel. The flies are going to be bad. And as we all know, there are engineering fails. 3 million gallons is a lot of sludge. And if that should fail, how is that going to impact our nature, our environment? And will it impact our water, our drinking water there? I have already witnessed firsthand, because I go by my front yard, the tractor-trailer traffic is now very high, loud, and as stated, the roads cannot handle it. I'm very, very concerned about this, and I hope that something can be done to make everybody happy as far as the farmer and the residents. As a gentleman stated, maybe they can store, find another place rather than where the permit has been issued for, to be placed. That is all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Bear. I also live on Porter Mill Road. I built my home out there 20 years ago. And the person that's putting this up is also farming my fields. If it, I found out about this on Sunday. It's been in contention out there probably for the last five to six years about this sludge being put on the fields. A lot of farmers don't agree with it. A lot of people don't agree with it, for sure. I, for one, do not either. It's not put on every field, and this is not manure and litter that most people would think would be put on farmers' fields as far as fertilizer. This is a sludge that is, doesn't come from the chicken houses, it comes from the processing plants. So as far as I'm concerned, looking at it by the way, common sense, it's, it's an industrial waste, basically. It is all your chicken heads, your bones, the guts, the fat, all of it put together, and they want a place to store it, until it breaks down so that they can put it on the fields. So that's what they're looking at. So as far as I'm concerned, it's industrial waste, and incidentally, it's about 550 yards from my well, in my home, is where it's going to be put. Nobody knows what it is. I've tried to look up online to find out what kind of a tank they're talking about. It doesn't give any kind of explanation. The only thing that I found online was it can be done, is like a roofless pole building with, with salt-treated sides and a concrete floor. The property that we're talking about is probably about 20 foot above sea level. When I had to have my septic system put in 20 years ago, because of the high water table, I had to go with my drain fields directly on top of the ground. They made me pump it 350 feet from my house in order to put it at the highest part of my property that I had, and I'm at 24 feet above sea level. So this property's at 20 to 21. And if it's going to have, be a concrete slab, what's going to keep it from running out with a concrete slab? Everybody knows how much rain we've had in the last two years, probably twice as much as our, as our national average has been. What happens if the next two years are going to be that way? There's my drinking water. We're talking about groundwater that's probably six to eight feet below that. That's not very much filtered before it gets to the groundwater. That's my concerns. Second concern that nobody's mentioned so far, what about residential values and real estate values? I'm about as ticked off as what's happened in the last eight years as anybody has been with the value of my home that I put up 20 years ago. So now you're going to throw another contention in on top of it. Not too tickled with that either. So as far as I'm concerned, if somebody wants to put a facility to house industrial waste, which is what I would consider this to be, I've grown up in the country all my life. I'm used to manure. I'm used to manure being on the fields for three to four weeks' time period where, yeah, you roll your windows up when you go by. Every once in a while, you, you ride by a field where somebody puts some pig manure out. You roll your windows up about a half hour before you get there. This is going to be terrible. I mean, even when they put it on the fields, it's, if, if you've watched them put it on the fields, they put it on the fields with a piece of equipment that actually puts it into the ground and, and tills the ground as it's being put in. So the smell is knocked back, I would imagine, 100-fold. If you put it in a storage facility, and this is an open storage facility, open top, my God. Not to mention the wildlife that's around. I'm a big deer hunter. I love my deer coming around. What's going to happen with diseases? I understand that there's bacteria in this as it breaks down. What happened, what happens if fox, red fox and deer get in there? We suppose we have coyotes out our way. I haven't seen any of them in 20 years, but I hear about them all the time. What happens if they get into it? It's going to be spread all over the place. It's, it's not a safe situation, period, nor is it a good financial situation for anybody that owns any real estate out there. None at all. So I'm, I'm very upset about it, and I, as you probably will know, you won't be farming my fields anymore if this, if this moves forward. So I'm going to do everything I can do to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Dave Kenny, 24790 Porter Mill Road. First off, I want to start by thanking Mark Kilmer for his work with the council over the past, and we're going to miss you when you leave. So good luck with whatever you're going to be doing. Maybe you'll be on a council in Idaho. Want to talk about the storage tank, just like the others. Ag is our second biggest industry in Wycomco County. We have a freedom to farm law in Wycomco County to protect our farmers from not being able to do the things that they need to do to grow their crops. And the residents are appreciative of the job that farmers do, especially when they're sitting down to the dinner table eating. And most understand some of the inconveniences on the road or the smells within reason. Farmers also have a great responsibility. They, they need to be good stewards of the land, to be good to the environment, and to be a good neighbor. And the majority of the farmers, and I say majority, probably 95% of the farmers that I work with every day are, fit this criteria. The problem today is the good neighbor part. There are no regulations to prevent this tank from being erected in the county, in our community. All we can ask in this situation is for Mr. Burns to find a different location. Over 90% of the neighbors contacted, signed a petition, and do not want this. In the conversation with Mr. Burns, he indicated that he was looking at another property. I hope he sticks to it and pursues that. Going forward, what can you do? I hope that you will work with the Wycomco County Farm Bureau, very good organization, Maryland Department of Agriculture, and anybody else, maybe the MDE, to adjust the regulations- regulations so that these issues will not be coming up again, such as where to locate the storage facilities and what is actually in those tanks. Personally, I would like to see the material stored in tanks where it's made, and then applied during the time period allowed by law. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Any other public comments?
Patrick Nowm, Somerset County resident, Wycomico County business owner. The Wings and Wheels event was held this weekend to a great success, I would say. I saw several of the council members out there, and it highlighted the potential and the benefit to the county of the airport. It's been alleged, though, that Bayland Aviation is opposed to any of the projects that are being proposed for the airport, which is entirely incorrect. During this past weekend's events, the airport manager announced that a new business would be coming to the airport, referred to as Sky Night, whose experience as an FBO, maintenance provider, or flight school is limited at best. Nonetheless, Bayland Aviation welcomes Sky Night or any other business who wants to compete with and enhance the airport. I'm a capitalist. I welcome competition. It benefits the airport. It benefits the customer. It benefits the residents. I just wanted to be on the record that we are not opposed to any of the suggestions out there. We just want them done in the most economically feasible and reasonable manner, necessary or within reason. Our primary goal is the continued success and growth of the Wycomico Regional Airport. However, the airport cannot give favorable rates and terms and conditions to a new business in order to lure them here while discriminating against Bayland or any other business at the airport. Bayland has served the Salisbury Airport for 47 years, 22 of which have been under my ownership. And I am proud to be from Maryland and the Eastern Shore and to raise my family here. My concern is that if Bayland is driven out and a new entity were to come in and it not be successful, where's that going to leave the airport? So, again, my primary concern is the airport, which relates directly to myself and my family. So I just really wanted to get that on the record. And we have recently informed the airport and the county of our intention to invest in new fuel tanks, which has been a requirement of the airport. So we're moving forward with that, and we're hoping to work with the county and management to accomplish that and to continue with further investment in the airport. So, thank you, and we'll talk to you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, all. My name is Mary Bailey. I am a town commissioner on the Mardella Springs, the small town of Mardella Springs. And thank you, Mr. Mark Kilmer. Sorry to see you go. You've helped us a lot. You really have. I'm actually here for the, the thing that is being dealt out at Porter Mill and Rigan Road. My concern is this. The, the environmental issues that could be compromised by a leakage, an overflow getting into our water systems, not only the systems of the water, but also in the soil. You have to remember, our, I appreciate farmers. I'm a farm girl myself, and I know about manure. Sludge is quite different. And anything that comes from the poultry plants is also mixed with chemicals. So you have to remember that when it goes into that tank, if you have an overflow or another spillage or a leakage, that's going to go into the soil as well as the water. The, the other issue is that the way the permits are issued, you have to put some restrictions. You're going to have to question what is going into the tanks before you give the permits, no matter what kind of permit they're asking for. If he's asking for a barn permit or a tank, what's he going to put in there? You have to know before it's issued. I'm not saying, it's the council that did this, but I think it goes to the agriculture department. Natural Resources doesn't handle that. But environmental issues, have to be aware of everything that's going on. And you have to be able to publicly notify individuals what's happening. And it should be done at least 60, 90 days before so that individuals and residents have the opportunity to react and ask questions and find out what's happening. I only found out about this last night at nine o'clock in the evening. And I understand the farmer, or the farmer's situation, but there has to be other ways to handle this. There really is. Even, I mean, I understand that there's like an underground river that goes through Mardella Springs. That's our water source. That also flows all around the area. It's not just ours. It's, it's for everybody. And we're having an influx of people wanting to move to Mardella. They want to move in here and go to school. They don't want their children, I'm sorry, they don't want them going to the Salisbury schools. They want to come to Mardella Springs. So that is also into the, one another reason why I want to speak, because of the schools, the children. The also, going back to the sludge, it will draw flies. And flies do fly. So do mosquitoes. So they're going to infect either animals or humans. Let's face it. And if it's an open tank, it's even worse. I'm shaking like a crazy. But I, I think you all understand. It really is a very, very huge concern for Mardella Springs, the whole area. I think also Hebron comes into this. You're, you're looking at a huge area, not just, just residential. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. You may be shaking, but you did an excellent job. And we appreciate your service on the council.
My name is Karen Williamson. I live on 7840 Athel Road, Hebron, Maryland. I have issues with my breathing. And I live out there in the farmland. I appreciate the farmer. I have no problem with respecting that they have to fertilize their fields in order to put out their crop. And I understand that. I stay inside a lot due to spring and summer, due to the planting time. But I feel like this wastewater tank going in is going to be very negative for our area, especially for anyone who does have issues with their health. And we're all not getting any younger. And as we get older, our bodies do deteriorate and have more issues. I'm speaking about, I live by a pond. I see people with their families down there every day fishing and enjoying it. What if this tank were to leak, get into our beautiful pond, pour in the water in there, poison the fish, the animals that live by the pond? It is just so wonderful to experience an osprey swaying down and picking fish up out of that pond. It's a beautiful sight. And until you've seen it, you can never really appreciate it. And the thought that this could all be destroyed because of something like this, maybe leaking into our waterways. It's, it's a sad thing. And I'd like to type you will consider it and really keep it in mind of everything I've just stood here and said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Any other public comments? And that concludes public comments. Council comments?
I guess I'll speak up since I represent the Mardella Springs area. I appreciate everyone showing up. It seems that Mardella Springs has been on, we got a lot of attention from Mardella Springs at a few meetings. So whoever, whoever takes this seat should certainly take note of the special community that is Mardella Springs. And if you take off the people there, you're definitely going to hear from them. So that's, that's clear. But I understand the concerns with, with the tank being located there. I've had numerous calls. Probably one of the best point people in the area is Mr. Kenny there at the hardware store. He's, I think every person in Mardella Springs shops there, and he hears it all. And he passes it along. He's been very good about letting, letting me know about the concerns. And, and so, you know, as was stated, this is something that's permitted under Wycomico law right now. The person, you know, the, the tank is considered agricultural use and is permitted. I've talked with planning and zoning a couple times. There's no laws being broken. There's no traffic study that's required, I don't believe. But that might point to the need that maybe in the future, like Dave was saying, some others said, that, you know, need to look at the law. You know, we had it with the chicken house, the big chicken house complexes. This is a little bit similar in that situation where, you know, those larger chicken houses had some concerns with neighbors, and the council changed the laws to try to, you know, balance out some of those needs. Dorchester County has a different law than Wycomico in terms of storage tanks. Maybe we should look what, what some of the other counties are doing. But that, that is, that's the path forward. The traffic issue is certainly a real traffic issue. I mean, you know, ever since I've known Dave, you know, I stop at the store, he always tells me, why don't you go down Rigan Road, see how good Rigan Road is? He's always, you know, those Kennys really want you to go down Rigan Road to see, just to see what the roads are like. You know, the, the roads are in, you know, I mean, you know, the county tries, but the roads aren't in that good a condition, Rigan Road and Porter Mill Road. And this will certainly make that worse. And that's something that needs to be considered because, you know, that affects everyone. And that, you know, country roads during the winter especially where there's, you know, where it's, you know, like someone was saying, where it's covered, the ice is heavy, the roads are narrow, there's a lot of blind curves there. That's a real concern. And that, you know, if there's going to be heavy, heavier industrial use there, you know, that certainly needs to be taken into consideration in county code. I don't think there's anything that can be done for this specific project except, you know, working with the farmer, try to be a good neighbor. I know there's some of that right now. I mean, most of these things that we deal with at the, the county level, if people just be good neighbors to each other, you wouldn't even need to deal with us because people work it out amongst themselves. But we have to get involved when that doesn't happen. And that may be what happens here. I, I won't be around for that. But, you know, that, that may be, this points to a need that maybe our county code might be a little bit deficient. And that probably should be discussed. But I appreciate everyone showing up. I appreciate the kind words. So thank you for that.
Is the county that is going to explain to us what's actually been permitted to happen? Why would they build it? I can't imagine a three million gallon tank out of metal.
I mean, I, I think planning and zoning would have that information. I mean, so the council is not the boss of planning and zoning. We, we can call and we can ask them questions. We can't tell them anything. I'm not sure how much is public record. I don't know if Wayne and Weston know how much is public record about what's being built in terms of an application. But if they ask planning and zoning, would planning and zoning be able to give the details of what's being built?
Yeah, we could.
Okay. So I, I think planning and zoning would probably be able to give you the exact details if you'd call-
And you're saying there's, there's no way we can stop this from happening, period?
As I, as I understand the law, I mean, it's, it's permitted by right, as I understand it. It's an agricultural use, is what I've been told by-
It's not an agricultural use. It's an industrial waste use.
Well, I, I, you know, we're, we're on the legislative side here. We're-
Does he come out?
Sir.
No, I understand. I understand. Look, I, I understand your frustration. I certainly do.
I don't think you do.
I, sir-
Come out of Porter Mill.
Excuse me, sir. I, I recognize your concern, and I appreciate, I appreciate where, you know, your, your, you know, your aggravation with this. And you spoke very well at the podium. You expressed your point very well. Allow Councilman Kilmer to, you know, to finish his comments, and you can, you're more than welcome to talk to him after the meeting or when we recess, or any of the council members. Because honestly, you know, we all recognize what's being said here, and I think we do want to try to, you know, address whatever we can, which is within our authority. Councilman?
Yeah. So we, we understand your concern. And I've heard it pretty clearly. I'm not sure what can be done about this specific project. It complies with Wycomico County laws, from what I understand. And so we can, I could talk more planning and zoning. We could talk with the executive staff about that. But in terms of, you, you can't revoke a permit that's legally permitted. I mean, the, the county government can't, can't just break the law. And so that's, that's what we have to try to deal with in terms of dealing with the code in the future, like, like Dave talked about. So I'll be happy to talk with Weston and Wayne about that in the future, you know, after this meeting today, about what can possibly be done about it. But in terms of what planning and zoning said, this complies with the law as the law exists today and is permitted. And, you know, that is probably a flaw in our code, and I agree with that 100%. But we, we play catch-up on this end with that. So I know that's not the answer. I know you're not satisfied with that answer, but that's, that's the state as it exists today, as I understand it.
Does planning and zoning know what's going in that tank?
If, if I could ask, this, this is a comment period, and unfortunately, there's not an exchange here unless it may be a work session where we, where we proceed with that. But again, you all are asking very good questions. Planning and zoning is on the second floor. Planning and zoning is downstairs on the second floor. It is in this building while you're here. Okay? And they can certainly answer those questions. I would hope they could, or at least they would be able to get back to you. But I would address that. Yes.
Didn't you just pass an emergency legislation about Sheriff's Department giving a extra officer, have that emergency legislation to stop this tank?
Well, it's, it's no-
Or enable this tank for, for it to be a public hearing on?
I understand what you're saying. And that's what Councilman Kilmer had said, is that, you know, it's going to be up to this council to try to see what our options might be in regard to this. We recognize the fact that there are laws in place, and we are assuming that this, this sludge tank was not put there illegally. We're assuming that they followed all guidelines. But, you know, everyone here has made some very good points today. You've talked about the fact that there's industrial waste. You've talked about the fact that there's a high water table. You had mentioned the traffic with the, with the tractor-trailers. And I guess it would be up to the council to at least check with planning and zoning and with the Health Department on all the parties involved, and MDE and, and MDA, and, you know, put some feelers out and say, were all proper procedures followed, and what recourse might there be? So what has been done, we can only assume was done legally. Again, the council did not take part in that, and we're not made aware of this until we also received emails from individuals. So what we've heard today is probably the most we've been informed, and we appreciate you being here for that fact. And we recognize this is our position. We're seven elected officials, and we're only elected by the citizens of Wycomico County, which every one of you are. So we want to address your concerns, but want to follow the processes necessary in order to make sure we can resolve this. And, and we will respond. We certainly will respond to you. Council comments. Mark, you, you done? Josh?
I'll just add on to that. You know, this is certainly an issue. I grew up in, on Athel Road, not that far around the side. You know, this is, the roads were bad then. For a long time, Wycomico County was one of those counties that did not want to plan. And we didn't do a very good job of it. I've, you know, I worked on the comprehensive plans of every other county across the entire Eastern Shore, nine counties. Wycomico is one of those ones that did not want to do so. I think we only have one, our one district, or roughly, you know. We do not do a very good job of making sure that the, the residents and the agricultural community are, you know, are finding common ground. I do think, we did pass our comprehensive plan. I wasn't on the council then, but that was 2017. We need to have a new process where we really, really evaluate our, our codes and our standards and what's, what's allowed. You know, there, there are folks here, I know that, that are, you know, members of the Farm Bureau. I rarely show up to a Farm Bureau meeting, but, you know, this is a good opportunity for all of us to go and, and to speak and to find common ground. I don't think Mr. Burns is getting very many Christmas cards this year, but this, this is, you know, I don't doubt that we can find a better location. And that might be, unfortunately, this, our body doesn't have the ability to act the way that we might want to, yet. But that's where we, that's where we need to find common ground. I will say, in, in closing, the, you know, adding on to what Councilman Kilmer said, Wycomico, the Mardella residents did a great job last, you know, last meeting, coming to talk about our schools and how important that is. And we've now, thanks to the folks that came out from the Mardella, Hebron, Sharp Towne Community, Tri-City area, that we are- Community, tri-city area, that we are actually, that, you know, that process looks like it's back on process. That school could be, could be moving forward. And that's important. So the ability for folks to have a voice and to come out and say what's important is highly important. And we need to all find common ground. Last thing I'll say in this, on the rest of this, there are important, so the folks watching on PAC-14, we do have National Folk Festival kickoff coming May 29th. This is going to be a big event, a big event for our community. The Ben and Layton Memorial Run is also coming up June 2nd. There's a native landscaping planning there that morning. And then the last thing I'll say is just on the school board nomination. We had, this is a real challenge. I was regretfully that we didn't come together with a decision today. But I think we're blessed with the fact that we have a community with a lot of great residents who could serve on the school board. And so I'm sure we'll find a common ground. I was not in favor of an elected school board either. But this is one of the situations where I think we can find common ground, and we'll do so. But I want to thank both candidates who put their name forward, and we'll address that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Vice President Dodd?
Yes, I too want to thank everyone for coming out, just like the last meeting about the school discussion. We listen to each and every one of you. And I stated then, when you speak, we listen. And today, we're listening. And please, don't get upset with us. Some of us didn't hear about this until the first email the other day. Can things be done? We're going to look into it. Maybe one of the first things we need to do is look at the permitting process and look at the permit. But we're here, we're going to listen. Some of us weren't a part of the permitting process in the past. And I understand that you have issues where you live, and hopefully, we can help you with this. But that's what we're here for, and thank you for coming. And I think Mr. Kenny spoke so eloquently. And one of the things he said that really struck home is the good neighbor part. So it's the neighbor part that you need to be concerned with. And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but it's something to consider. But we will be looking into this, and I do thank you for that. And I am glad to see that the Mardella school project is moving forward. And thank you, Ms. Wright, for coming to speak again. Like I said, your voice is heard. I'm not going to keep going on, but I do want to point out that Memorial Day, we're having a ceremony at the Civic Center at 10:00 a.m. on Memorial Day, that Monday. So if you get a chance, please come out there. And just try to remember, it's more, Memorial Day is more than just hot dogs and hamburgers. Thank you, and have a safe holiday.
Councilman Dodd?
Yes, ma'am.
How would you communicate with us when you look into this?
Yes, what we'll do is, it would be nice if anyone would want to give their name and address, contact information to Mrs. Hurley before you leave today. And that way, we can make sure if anyone wants to be maybe the focus, the focal point.
We've got 80 of them.
Yeah, we've got plenty of them. But, you know, we would have to depend on you to, you know, relay that information to your neighbors. But, you know, if, and today, anybody wants to appoint themselves as the focal point, give that name to Mrs. Hurley. And feel free also to contact us. You can go online, and you have all of our email addresses online. Now, all you have to do is send us an email. And with that email, we'll know that address, and then we will be, there will be an obligation to respond to you. So that would be probably one of the best ways to do it as well.
And thank you for that question. And you may just get one email response from the president instead of seven. Sometimes if you don't hear from all of us, that's the reason. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I want to make some comments regarding the issue that many of you have spoken about this morning. And I've had numerous people reaching out regarding this. When I ran for county council, I had three priorities. One of those priorities was addressing our zoning code in our ag district. We have a very archaic zoning code. We're one of the few counties in the state of Maryland, in our ag district, we have one zoning. It's just A1. That's it. It's wide open. In almost every county, like for example, in our residential districts, we have R-15, R-30, R-10. In our commercial, we've got C-1, C-2, C-3, highway, commercial, industrial. We've got industrial 1, industrial 2, heavy industrial, light industrial, office service highway. All these different uses and intensity of use. In our ag district, which is the bulk of our county, it's wide open. We don't have an A1, an A2, an A3. We don't have different intensity levels. And the issue here is, we have uses that are, it's been mentioned several times, the terms being used, it's industrial scale and nature. And it's being used under the, I don't want to necessarily say the disguise of ag, but we're already right to farm, county, and we're right to farm state. But at the same time, where does that line get crossed between what are industrial scale and what's ag? And when you address issues like the large poultry operations that are industrial in scale, we have issues with large solar fields that are solar power plants that are industrial in scale. You had issue with a $3 million storage tank, which is industrial in scale. This is, you know, this is the issue that needs to be addressed. You know, is this industrial or is this ag? And or is it industrial ag? But that can all be addressed via the zoning code. We need to go back to our zoning code. We adopted a strategic plan earlier this year. And in that strategic plan, part of that, and our planning part of that, is addressing our zoning code. And it needs to be done sooner rather than later. You know, Ms. Carter, you know, we just appointed Ms. Carter for another term as head of our planning. And, you know, I'm looking kind of Mr. Strasburg. But, you know, I think we definitely need to get this on our board work session with Ms. Carter and start having those discussions now regarding the ag uses and the industrial scale nature. The other counties across the shore, most of them have already dealt with this. Because they've had, they've had to face these issues. And they've made changes. And there's ways to accomplish that. Someone mentioned real estate values. Now you're talking about something, hopefully, I know maybe a little something about being in the real estate valuation business for 33 years. But in real estate valuation, there's a basic premise, and it's called consistency of use. And consistency of use and compatibility of use is having uses, that's why you have zoning. That's why you don't allow industrial plants in a residential neighborhood, because that's an inconsistent use. That same thing needs to be addressed in your ag districts. We need to have different districts. We need to protect our prime farmland. We need to protect our prime water source, like areas over the Paleo Channel. We need to direct the heavier intensified uses, such as these industrial ag uses, to parts of the county that are more suitable. You know, a lot of parts of our county that are in the ag districts really look more like a residential district in a lot of cases. But they still have an ag zoning. So it's an issue that, there is something we can do, and it, but it really revolves around the ag zoning code that we have in our county. So, you know, one thing I want to recommend is that, you know, as soon as we can, we get this on our agenda to, you know, address this, because it is a priority, and it needs to be done as soon as we can.
Thank you, Councilman McCain.
One last thing about Memorial Day, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to thank Mr. Dodd about reminding people of that. Just on, kind of a personal note, the, my full name is William Ralph McCain. And I'm named, my namesake is after Ralph McCain. Well, who was Ralph McCain? Well, Ralph McCain was my dad's brother. And Ralph McCain was a radio airman on a B-24 bomber. And in 1944, his plane was shot down over the China Sea, and he was lost to sea. And the only memory we have of, which would have been my uncle, is on that memorial at the Civic Center, at our war memorial. His name's on that war memorial. And, you know, that's why I always would attend that with my father, which is no longer with us. So, you know, I tend by myself now, because that's my namesake, and that's, you know, I think a lot of us out here have that history of people that have come before us to make that ultimate sacrifice. So I think it's, you know, very important for us to take that pause on Memorial Day and remember those that have made the ultimate sacrifice.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Any other council comments? Council Dabes?
Unfortunately, the ag problem, I represent the district that's next to Mr. Kilmer, and we fought with the CAFOs. So I know what you guys are going through, because I had to fight for the CAFOs. And as I looked through this petition, all those roads, I drive a school bus, and I ride down every one of those roads five days a week. So I know what you guys are talking about as far as the roads. They are deteriorated, and if they put trucks on it, it's going to be even worse. I meet those trucks in the mornings, so I know what you guys are coming up against. I meet them six o'clock in the morning. So you know what I'm going through. So whatever we can do, we're going to try to do to help you guys out. As far as Memorial Day, like you, Bill, I go every, every year. My dad's name's on there. He died, got killed over Vietnam. So anyone come support the people out there, it's a good event, it's a good time.
Joe?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming in today. On a lighter note, Councilman Dodd gave a proclamation to Eric Tyler this morning. I just want to relay a little story. A couple weeks ago, I was at a retail location on the east side of the county, and a lady had a medical emergency. And we were helping her get on, put a blanket down, get her on the ground, and the lady called the ambulance. And probably 15 minutes out, you know, and that's a long time when somebody's not doing well. But I happened to look up, and there stood Eric. He jumped in his car, and they communicated with the fire, EMS people about who was going to be there. And Eric just came in his car. So that just shows how dedicated these guys are. I mean, he could have gone to the fire department, and it could have taken longer, but he was there within five minutes. And I know that lady appreciated it, and we all did too. So when you see these guys, thank them for what they do. They volunteer, and it's important to our county. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Under presidential comments, I would simply reiterate what's probably already been said here. But I must tell you that this is probably one of the most well orchestrated public hearings I've ever attended. And I've been in a lot of them. I've been in heated, you know, pros and cons, but this is, what did I say?
You said public hearing.
Public comments. Public comments, sorry. So, but the public comments, I mean, I was, you know, very, very much impressed by the fact that it was all such rational comments that were made here. I think it brought out a lot of individual arguments that I might not have thought of individually. And that's really the purpose of this, so that, you know, when we listen to the public, we hear what you have to say. But this was very well orchestrated, excellent comments. We will look at what the options are. We'll look at what our options are as a council. And we will respond to you as the comment was asked, and we'll make sure that we get back to you, no matter what this might entail, and keep you informed. And as I said before, if we hold a work session, we'll make sure that the work session, Mrs. Hurley, is at 6:00 at night and not 10:00 in the morning. The reason that we actually established a 6:00 meeting was because we recognized not everyone could get to these meetings at 10:00 a.m. So that's why we changed that back in, whatever you two guys would remember.
Yeah. '07, '08, something like that.
Yeah. But we do, we do appreciate it, you know, comments as to whether it's industrial, the trucks, many issues, you know, whether or not it's environmental, whether, no matter what it might be, zoning, no matter how you look at it. Unfortunately, with what Josh Hastings, Councilman Hastings said, he is correct as far as our zoning is concerned. But when that decision came before the council, the council was concerned about the property rights of the owners in the ag district. So we were reluctant to restrict development in the ag district. We wanted to allow the farmers or the landowners to be able to sell that land. And, you know, if they wanted to sell it to a developer and put a house there, we did not want to take that right away from them, because that was their nest egg. So we felt we couldn't tread on them to that degree. I'm afraid that what we're seeing is that backlash. It's now that you do have communities that have been permitted in the ag district, we're seeing the fallout from that. So we're going to have to see how we'd like to rework it. Councilman McCain, you know, the first day he came in was, let's look at this ag district. So we're going to have to try to work through that and see what we can do to resolve it. But we will let you know. I wanted to let Don Beach know that, and all of our staff, that they did an excellent job with the wings and wheels at the airport. It was very fantastic to be able to come out there and look at the airplanes and military aircraft, et cetera, and all the other events that they had. It was, it was a good time. And again, Michelle Wright, you had commented about the school board, and we understand that, we recognize that. I'd like to see some stronger measures taken with the CIP from Mardella High School. But we're going to have to take what's coming right now and see how we're going to expand on it as the next year goes by, as the years go by. So hopefully, I think we are at least moving in the right direction. That being said, I have to read a statement. Entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to general provision, Article Section 3-305B7, to consult with legal counsel to discuss confirmation of department heads to prevent the disclosure of confidential information to protect the attorney-client privilege. Council will then reconvene in open session at 1:00 p.m. for budget work sessions with the sheriff's office and the Board of Elections. Board of Elections. That's the motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That meeting has been adjourned. We have lunch scheduled for 12:30. Gentlemen, Mr. Weston Young is here to discuss the first item on the agenda with the surplus property and the revised capital improvement program.
I know. I'll make it as quick as I can.
Remember, you're small enough to down.
Okay? Since we-